And welcome back to the 2019 Meet the Jamestown City Council Candidates Forum, live from the Regulonay Media Arts Studio in downtown Jamestown. Again, I'm your host and moderator, Jason Sample. We will now begin the second half of our program with our six candidates for the three contested city council ward seats. In the College Ward One race, we have Brent Sheldon and Tim Smeele. In the Bergman Ward Four race, we have Marie Caruba and Brittany Spry. And in the Forest Ward Five race, we have Maria Jones and Grant Olson. Round of applause, please. We have done a random drawing of order prior to the start of our program, and the Ward Five candidates will go first, with Maria Jones followed by Grant Olson. And you have four minutes, Maria. You can begin anytime. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Again, I'm Maria Jones, Ward Five Councilwoman. It's a great honor for me to be here this evening, to be able to talk to you. It's just, it is an honor and a privilege to serve the city of Jamestown. I am a resident of the city of Jamestown. I was born here. I was born at WCA UPMC Hospital. And my family, we grew up here in Jamestown. My parents were working hard parents, and they taught me how to work hard as well. And so I've tried to live that kind of life, my adult life. So, just so you know a little bit about me, I am, I was employed by Cummins engine for forty years. During that time, I learned how to manage processes and people and budgets, and I worked hard. I worked very hard for my family, my husband, my daughter. I retired from there about a year and a half ago, and still working out what all is next, if, for any of those of you that are retired. During that time, I educated myself. I'm a graduate of Jamestown Community College. I did my graduate work in management and in strategic leadership. And, and so it has been a privilege for me to serve. I've served in some sort of public service capacity most of my adult life here in Jamestown. And, and I've learned so much from doing that. I think I've learned more than ever, being part of the city council these years. And so, so I just want to thank WRFA, and the radio station, and Jason, and the Reg for hosting this event. Maybe we don't do enough of these kinds of things, not just for election, but period, where we can come together and, and talk and exchange ideas and, and get comments. I, I've heard that said in the, in the, in the council people at large's comments, that there should be more discussions, and there should be more talking about ideas and exchange of ideas and best practices. And so, and so I would just say that in, in being on city council, I have a few passions that I think are important. One of those is about neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods in Jamestown are changing, and we need stronger neighborhoods here in Jamestown. You know, your ability to just walk in and close the door and come back out the next morning, and, and all is good with the world is changing in Jamestown, and we need to be aware of that. We need stronger neighborhoods so that we know who our neighbors are. We know, we need to get to know our neighbors. We need to, to work with one another and to, and to help each other in our neighborhoods. And, and that is a passion that I think that we should, we should all espouse. Our neighborhoods are our families and, and our lives. And, and I believe that the council has processes that will help to make neighborhoods stronger. And those processes are built in already. They are around neighborhood watches and, and block gatherings and those kinds of things where we can talk about what's working and what's not. As we discuss more, I'll tell you more about how I feel about and what I'm passionate about, and why I'm running. But the reason I am running, just to, just to end my segment here, I believe in the future of Jamestown. We can no longer say, why doesn't somebody do something about that? We've got to be able to do it. We've got to be able to participate and be a part of the things that need to happen in the city of Jamestown. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Moving along to the other Ward Five candidate, Grant Olson. Grant, you have four minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Grant Olson. I'm running for Jamestown City Council in Ward Five. I want to start by thanking WRFA, the Reg Center for the Arts, Western New York News Now, I saw them hiding out over there, and everyone for coming out tonight to support this election. I'm a Jamestown guy. I was born and raised here. I graduated from Jamestown High School in 2005, received my degree from Jamestown Community College, and went to work for my family's business downtown. I had the opportunity to see the inner workings of several multimillion dollar corporations in my career, and I understand how to run a business. And I think we need to take more, a more business-centric approach to running our city's operations. I've attended a lot of meetings, had a lot of discussions with fellow candidates, city workers, union leaders, former employees over the last year, and I already have a strong knowledge of many of the city's current problems and inefficiencies. I'm ready to hit the ground running. I'm new to this whole process. I currently serve on two boards of directors, but I'm excited to learn more about the council and all of its processes. Focusing on our neighborhoods and housing issues will be a top priority for me. Allocating more resources to our code enforcement will help good landlords and drive out the bad ones. My Jamestown Pride initiative will strengthen our neighborhoods and turn our city as a whole. I'm willing to make the hard decisions that need to happen to get our city back on financial, financially stable ground. I know many believe the unions are part of the problem, but I've sat down with these men and women to find out their side of the issue, and a lack of cooperation with the current administration to me is by far the greatest hindrance. I'm a big advocate of fresh faces in our local government. I hope I can garner your vote, but I hope that you also consider all the new candidates that are running for office in this election. It's going to be a rough couple of years to get our finances back on track and keep our city the central hub of our local economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. We'll hear from the Ward Five candidates a little bit later on, but let's move along to the opening statements for Ward Four, and we'll begin with Marie Caruba. Marie?
Thank you, Jason. I moved here thirty-six years ago with my husband, and we've raised our two boys here who have now been educated and unfortunately left the area for jobs. But for the past six years, I have represented residents of the Fourth Ward, and I've used my skills as an attorney and volunteer mediator to help them with their concerns. During my tenure on the council, I have collaborated with members from both parties to work for the betterment of the city. I have a passion to learn and to serve others, and while others may find my busy life to be overwhelming, I'm energized by the ability to utilize knowledge I have gained across multiple organizations to constructively problem-solve issues. I also believe in giving back to the community by volunteering at the Center for Resolution and Justice, St. John's Fish Fry, Jamestown Labor Day Festival, Halloween Fest, Chatacoint Accessible Playground Build, and the World of Wheels. When not working or volunteering, I am committed to supporting local music and theater events that contribute to the vibrancy of our entire community. As Executive Director of Southwestern Independent Living Center, I manage, I manage a budget of half a million dollars and supervise twelve employees who annually serve more than twelve-hundred people with disabilities and their families. I currently serve as President of City Council and am a Finance Committee member, and have served in leadership positions on the boards of JCC, COI, TRC, BPU Workforce Investment Board, and Community Services Board. I have a proven record of accomplishments. As Chair of the City Housing Committee, I was instrumental in reviving it and invited COI, JRC, Code &amp; Crick to discuss their home programs. I brought housing opportunities made equal to Jamestown to present a free, fair housing program to educate both landlords and tenants as to their rights and to hopefully improve their relationships. With the mayor, DOD, and council, and JRC, I spearheaded new legislation for a partial tax exemption to encourage individuals to purchase and occupy distressed homes to make all the necessary repairs, to bring the homes into code compliance to improve our neighborhoods. And when it was brought to my attention that my neighbors on Widrig Avenue and West Side residents were experiencing repeated basement and street flooding for years, I began to take action. As a result, with the help of Councilman George Spitali, the problem was resolved, much to the pleasure of all my neighbors and residents. When neighbors on Summit Street contacted me about their concerns for a proposed cell tower to be built near their homes, I met with them to lend my support, and we attended several zoning board meetings. With facts and prepared statements, we were able to present the case and prevent the installation of the cell tower. The zoning board did vote down the various requests. It has not been built, and they have looked at alternatives to using micro towers, which are much more favorable to the neighbors. I'm especially proud of my work that supported funding for the Riverwalk Project, accessible playgrounds, and accessibility improvements that have been completed throughout the city and neighborhoods. Combining efforts from my work at Southwestern Independent Living Center and the city council have put our city on a path to ADA compliance that even Buffalo and New York City can't meet. These are a few of my accomplishments, but I also take pride in meeting with people in their homes and getting down in the trenches. I've waded in knee-deep water, looked at unsafe trees, reported zombie properties, poor street conditions, and vehicle traffic and safety issues to help the frustrated residents. I know I've had a positive impact on the city council, and if reelected, I will continue to work tirelessly getting positive results for the residents in the Fourth Ward and work on developing our neighborhoods and increasing workforce development. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. We'll move on to the other Ward Four candidate, that is Brittany Spry. Brittany?
Hello. My name is Brittany Spry, and I'm running for city council in the Fourth Ward. I'm currently employed at Casadega Valley School District as the Secretary to the Superintendent and the Clerk to the Board of Education. I graduated from Gannon University last August with a master's degree in public administration, and I'm currently pursuing an advanced certification to be certified as a school business administrator, which I will receive in December 2019. I've spent six years working in the public sector. Prior to working at Casadega Valley School District, I worked for Chautauqua County Government in the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service. I'm running for city council because there are so many exciting things that are happening in Jamestown. People are flocking downtown, and I want to see that excitement spill over into our neighborhoods and other areas of business in the city. Bringing people and business into the city is a sustainable tax base the city needs to be able to move forward. Another reason I'm running for city council is that I'm the mother of a young daughter. I don't want her to grow up and just be from Jamestown. I want her to be able to live here, plant her roots, and grow here. Although the city of Jamestown has seen positive growth, I want to work towards creating sustainable growth and providing meaningful opportunities for current and future communities. Just like everyone else who lives here, in a perfect world, we would have a low-tax, well-functioning, safe, drug-free city. That is, of course, the end goal, but in order to get there, there are a number of issues that need to be addressed in the city. I'm interested in addressing topics such as public safety, housing, the library, et cetera, but as just one of nine city council members, my primary goals focus on things that I can personally achieve with my, with my time there. The first and most important goal to me as a city council representative is being accessible and available to residents. I want to be available to people in a public place at designated times so that they can stop in to ask questions, discuss issues, or just say hello. As a city resident, I know I personally would like to be asked what my vision is for the city, and that is what I want to do for people living in the Fourth Ward and the city. I want to invite them to the table. I want to know what their vision is and what changes they want to see made. I want to bring those voices and concerns back to City Hall and make change that is meaningful and affects the future of our city in a better way. This is our city, but it's not our city unless we're all involved, and I want everyone to be involved. Another important goal to me is in the area of budgeting. Highly successful organizations are fiscally sound. I have education in public finance and have attended multiple trainings through the New York State Comptroller's Office and have a good understanding of how this all works. We have high taxes, yet we have budgetary concerns. I want to work with the council to put out an aggressive, short-term and long-term financial plan that will help the city move in a direction that has better financial health. I think we need fresh eyes reviewing the budget, and I know this is an area that I can be an asset. I moved to the area about eight years ago. I grew up in Rochester. I met my husband at Fredonia. He was offered a teaching job at Faulkner right out of college, and we relocated to this area. I never expected to, but I fell in love with the city in ways I could have never imagined. I love the neighborhoods, the beauty, and everything that there is to do here. This is where I own a home, and this is where I'm raising my daughter. As a resident, a mom, and an employee in the public sector, I know that I have a lot to offer as a city council representative. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, you're listening to the Meet the Candidates Forum here on WRFA. We're in Hour Number Two, featuring the Ward candidates, and we're in the middle of the opening statements for those Ward candidates for contested races. Let's move right along, and we'll move on to Ward Number One, known as College Ward One, on the east side of Jamestown, and we'll begin with candidate Tim Smeele. Tim?
Thanks, Jason, and thanks to my fellow candidates for being here. Big thanks to the Regulonay Center for the Arts and WRFA for hosting opportunities like this. This space that you're in is an example of what we can accomplish as a community working collaboratively. Not that long ago, a little over three years, my desk was a floor down right over there, and this space didn't look anything like this. It was, it was busted. And, and there's been tremendous strides made, and that's something to celebrate as a community. Big thanks to the folks at Western New York News Now for having the stream with video and audio. And everybody's thanked those folks, but you know who has really been the unsung hero is our timekeeper, Nate DiTanto. He's restarting a stopwatch over and over. He's gonna have carpal tunnel, so make sure to pat him on the back on your way out. These forums are a great way for candidates to share their ideas and plans for serving this community, and an equally great way for residents to hear directly from the candidates, information that doesn't fit neatly into bullet points that you would put on a door hanger or a sign. I want to share a little bit about my background because I think it's important that you understand where folks come from when they're interested in serving and representing you. The first time I visited Jamestown was in 1987. My grandmother served as the pastor of the Camp Street United Methodist Church here, and we would make the trip from the Buffalo area to have family events, so, you know, big holidays and family reunions and things like that. And because of that experience, my first looks at Jamestown were through the eyes of an eight-year-old, and I remember traveling around in the city core and seeing fire hydrants that were whimsically painted to look like insects and saying, can we please go buy the mosquito again? And I remember that, that shining pile of silver and gold in the windows at Chautauqua Music, and thinking like, this, this is heaven, right? So, fast forward until 2011, and I'd been living in Mayville after college for about ten years. And I found myself traveling to Jamestown several times a week to instruct as a teaching artist for the then-Arts Council, to attend meetings, to perform with Jamestown's improv comedy troupe, The Unexpected Guests, and to enjoy restaurants and be entertained myself. It was then that I realized that the progress and renaissance that was happening and was, was producing a lot of energy, and I was excited, and I felt called to invest in this, in this community. I felt called to live and work here. And so, at that point, I rented an apartment right over here on Third Street, and from that apartment, I could see City Hall, the Taco Hut, our beloved Forte, of course, the Regulonay Center for the Arts, and with ease, I could walk to most of my appointments and, and work and play. During that time, I worked part-time here at the Regulonay Center for the Arts and later on, full-time. I owned a publishing company that, that produced a paper called The Chautauqua Region Word that, that ran for ten years. I was a bartender at the Northwest Arena when it first opened. I served the first beer to John Marino when, when that got up and running. I hung in Finnish drywall, and I painted. You get the picture. It was paycheck to paycheck for me, and I kept wondering when the Jamestown Renaissance was going to show up in my, my checkbook. And, so, that's a common story here in Jamestown. A lot of folks are wondering when this Renaissance is gonna hit their checkbook. So, we're a long way from 1986 and the idealistic viewpoints of a little kid, but there are things happening. We won't prosper by being cynical or taking, taking jabs and being spiteful with competing nonprofits or the idea of them being competing, clinging to tribal partisanship or solutions that are outdated and no longer serve us. We have to celebrate our assets and not our liabilities. More on that later.
Thank you, Tim. And we'll move on to the other candidate and current councilman for Ward One, Brent Sheldon. Brent?
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, WRFA, Radio for the Arts, and the Regulonay, excuse me, for hosting Meet the City Council Candidates tonight. Would also like to thank the community members who came out tonight to learn more about myself and the rest of the candidates here. I've been a property owner and taxpayer in Ward One for thirty years. My wife Nancy and I have owned our home on Durant Avenue for twenty-six years. We've participated in the Jamestown Renaissance Block Rant Program to improve our home and neighborhood. I also participated in that program for my first home that I still own, which also is a rental property in the First Ward, so therefore, I'm a landlord. And I helped form the Neighborhood Watch Group in the Hotchkiss Street Durant Avenue area. My wife and I are still vested participants in that group. I volunteered for Infinity's Local Music Showcase for the past eight years, and I helped clean up the First Ward streets volunteering with Hands on Jamestown. I am the Ward One Councilman. I'm serving, currently serving my third consecutive term. I have served also a single term back in the mid-nineties when Dick Kimball was our mayor. I've served on all standing city council committees except the Finance Committee. I also serve on the Jamestown Property Rehabilitation and Conservation Board of Appeals, the Chautauqua County Lead Task Force, and the Chautauqua County Healthy Housing Task Force. I have worked for the Chautauqua County Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Environmental Services, as a public health sanitarian or inspector, and also as a EPA-certified lead risk assessor. On October 31st, I will retire from my county employment after a thirty-two-year career. As councilman, I brought back an annual free rabies clinic for Jamestown pet owners after a long absence. By the way, the next free clinic is Saturday, November 9th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Jamestown Fire Training Center, 240 Harrison Street. Cats, dogs, and ferrets only, please. No large mammals. As your councilman, I have proposed, proposed budget cuts and increasing revenues. However, they have been voted down by my fellow councilmembers in the past. I was the only councilman who voted not to exceed the property tax cap, tax cap, four times, and I was also the only councilman to vote against the last four property tax increases in Jamestown. However, I've been able to work with other councilmembers and the mayor in a bipartisan and congenial manner. If reelected, I pledge to work with the next mayor and city council, develop sites and buildings to help create good-paying jobs in the manufacturing and high-tech industries. New businesses and buildings will expand our tax base and increase city revenues. I've worked on improving rental registration in Jamestown, and will work with the next mayor and council to implement a rental inspection program to improve our housing stock and our neighborhoods. The city must enforce the housing codes to increase the standard of living, but also should reward good landlords for improving and maintaining their properties. Remember, I'm a landlord. Jamestown must also communicate with their neighboring communities and cooperate with them to provide more shared services and work towards regionalization, not isolation. Finally, as we all know, the drug epidemic has hit Jamestown very hard in recent years. This year, the Chautauqua County Sheriff's Department has started working once again under Sheriff Jim Quattron with the Jamestown Area Drug Task Force. I support their efforts against the drug dealers, but I also support more treatment programs for addicts who wish to get clean and stay off the life-altering drugs. With your vote, we can accomplish these goals and many more. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. And we'll move along to some questions now, as we continue our program this evening, and we'll begin with the first question to the candidates for Ward Four. That would be Brittany Spry and Marie Caruba. The question is, what do you see as the biggest challenge facing the city of Jamestown, and what can you do as a member of the city council to help find a solution to that challenge? We'll begin this time with Brittany. Ninety seconds.
I would say that our biggest challenge to the city of Jamestown is our current budget situation. We have high taxes, yet we have budgetary concerns. We are lacking revenue sources, but we have growing needs in our departments of public safety and just about everywhere. We have a declining tax base, which takes away from our, our, our ability to raise money to be able to create sustainable programs in the city. I would, so for me personally, I believe that our budget is our biggest concern. Speaking with residents in our ward, some other concerns that they feel is a lack of responsiveness from local government. They feel as though that they are reaching out to different departments and not getting the quality of response that they, they deserve. So, I would say that those are the biggest challenges facing our, the residents in my ward and for me personally as a city council candidate.
Thank you, Brittany. Marie Caruba?
Yes, I think right now, the biggest challenge we have is growing the tax base. I think we need to look at ways that we can help and support the local businesses. I think the workforce needs to be educated. We need to work and rely on places like JCC, which are operating an MTI facility to try and educate individuals who aren't necessarily looking for a four-year degree but want to work in fields and technology and, and other areas. We need to continue to work with smart city initiatives to try to reduce and reduce expenses and create efficiencies within the city. They will save money over the long haul. We also need to look at all the contracts with, with the unions and the healthcare, especially is for every organization, whether they be a city or a not-for-profit or a business. Healthcare costs are rising at an astronomical rate, and we need to look at ways that we can help reduce those expenses. We need to look at public safety as well. We need to do better on getting equipment and appropriate equipment to both our firefighters and our police departments because much of that has been lacking, as the city hasn't been able to afford it. So, that's what I would suggest.
Thank you, Marie. Let's move back to Ward Number One, and we pose the same question to the two candidates, Brent Sheldon and Tim Smeele, and we'll begin this time with Brent. Brent?
Thank you, Jason. I agree, our budget, our constitutional tax cap limit, declining tax base, pending contracts, a large number of tax-exempt properties we have in Jamestown, I think poses a huge challenge to try to create a budget that's balanced and to serve the people, to, to, you know, provide the proper public safety that they need, to keep the streets repaired, keep the parks open. So, my suggestion is, and I think, I think we need to go to the people at this point. What can we do without in Jamestown? What services are you willing to go without? Let's have town hall meetings, let's talk to people, see where some of their suggestions are. I know we can't make all the people happy, but we're at a very challenging time, especially with the coming year's budgets. We're gonna have to have some creative solutions. We need to have everybody on board. We need to all work together for this, to avoid having a, a control board. We cannot have a control board in the city of Jamestown. That would be devastating. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Tim Smeele?
Thanks, Jason. I think obviously you've heard a lot about the financial constraints and challenges that we're facing as a city and as a government, and certainly related to that are the issues of poverty and all that comes with that. We talked about addiction and the issues that, that come with that. That's absolutely a symptom of poverty. We're also needing to combat that apathy that we see, the, the negative talk about Jamestown that we see in, in the media. And the ways that we can address those things from the council are to, to help navigate to, to increase property value. I don't think that we can cut taxes in the near future, but what we can do is provide better value for the tax dollars being paid and figure out ways to grow that tax base. So, if we're bringing new business to Jamestown, we've got a lot of benefits, a lot of assets that we need to celebrate. We have very, very affordable utilities from the BPU. That is, I'll agree with the words that other people have said, that's a, just a significant asset, and we need to be leveraging, and we need to market that. I know that the Department of Development is, is often bogged down with grant administration. They've said so. So, whose job is it to, to market to the city of Jamestown? It's everybody's, but that can start with, with the council and the folks who serve on that. Also, we want to celebrate and support the work being done specifically with addiction from the Mental Health Association and the UCAN Mission.
Thank you, Tim. And let's move over to Ward Number Five, and we'll begin this time with Grant Olson. Grant?
As a business owner, I think the biggest challenge facing the city right now is the, the labor force. It all starts with jobs. You know, as many have mentioned, you know, not everybody's cut out for college and a four-year degree. We have a lot of great programs down at JCC with the MTI. You know, I know the county just launched a new employment website. We need to really get people, you know, back to work. You know, another thing I think is important is keeping, you know, everyone's talking about bringing people in. about bringing people in, you know, to fill the tax base. You know, one thing I think is important is keeping those who are, you know, leaving, you know, graduates that are leaving right after high school. You know, I think the thing now is, the first thing they want to do is get out of Jamestown. You know, we need to keep those people here, maybe give them some training, maybe start it earlier on, you know, at the high school level. I know there's been some integration with JCC and Jamestown High School. It all comes down to that. I talked to somebody down at Rand Machine, and they said they're just desperate for employees. They can't even fill shifts down there right now. So again, I think our biggest problem is our labor force and getting people back to work.
Thank you, Grant. And Maria Jones?
If we're going to improve the tax base here in Jamestown, we're going to need jobs to get that done. In order to get the jobs, you need to attract businesses to come here to Jamestown. In order to attract businesses to come here, you need that educational option. JCC has the MTI program, and if you're talking about bringing industrial jobs to Jamestown, you will need those kinds of trainings, those kind of mechanical trainings, and engineering training, and technical kinds of trainings to bring people here, to get people educated, and then to bring businesses to Jamestown. One happens with the other. They kind of dovetail with each other. In order to get people here, not only do you need those jobs, you also need the services. So it's always a delicate balance between, if you, in your budget, what do you cut? Because if you cut services and things like that, this is why people love Jamestown, because of all that we offer, the parks and the recreation and those things that we're doing and improving here in Jamestown. It is a challenge, but I believe that the jobs and the educational elements and the services are critical to our process.
Again, you're listening to the Meet the Candidates Forum here on WRFA Radio, as well as streaming on Western New York News Now. We have about twenty-five minutes left to go here. Let's move on to another question for the ward candidates, and this time, our question will focus on a recent editorial in the local newspaper. The Jamestown Post-Journal stated that the Jamestown City Council is a policymaking body that has made precious little policy for quite some time. It also said that fresh ideas must bring some fresh policies from the council. Is there a policy or policies you want to see introduced and enacted in the next two years? And we'll begin this time in Ward Number One, the College Ward, and Tim Smeele. Tim?
Thanks, Jason. As far as policy, it would be great to really crystallize the landlord registry, the rental property registry, and I know that there's been some good work done on that thus far. Let's continue that and make sure that we are enforcing code. And this is not necessarily a new piece of policy, but maybe a fresh look and enforcing that policy. We need to find ways to incentivize property owners, whether they're landlords or residents, to make sure that they're continuing to make improvements to their property. And we need to also find ways, the best ways, to reach out to folks who are renting to make sure that they find that pride in residency that several people have alluded to. I think it's also important that we look at the best ways to introduce that marketing of our assets here. It's, again, not necessarily a policy, but endeavor to focus on grant funding for the various projects that will support our police and fire, and to make sure that they have what they need. I think that that's, those are my major areas of focus. As far as policy, these are things that are in response to pressing needs as they come up. And one of the areas that we've dealt with is equal application of things like the Health and Safety Committee talking about curfews and things like that. We need to make sure that that's dovetailing with what's best for area and organizations and events.
Thank you. Brent Sheldon?
Well, Tim stole my answer.
I've been cribbing the whole time.
Yeah, he was reading my notes. As a certified lead risk assessor for Chautauqua County, I think I have been in more substandard rental units than any other council candidate or mayoral candidate, except for maybe Jeff Russell. He may have been in some more. But I've investigated lead poisoning children, documented lead hazards. Landlords must be held accountable for their housing violations. They must invest in their properties and bring them up to minimum living standards. That's where the next phase of rental inspection is rental, or rental registry is rental inspection. We need to create a program. We've talked about this in the past. It never got even to a vote with the city council prior to, when I came on the city council, that's when I last talked about this. The Healthy Housing Task Force has been investigating this. Dr. Lillian Naye has been a crucial part of this whole process, looking at what can we do to improve the quality of life for our residents, the people living in poverty. And we need to upgrade the standard of living in these rental properties by investing or creating a policy of inspections of rental units on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Let's move on to Ward Number Five and talk with those two candidates. We'll begin with Maria Jones. Maria?
And I also agree that our housing, this relationship, uneasy relationship, it seems like, between tenants and landlords, and how that's beginning to affect our neighborhoods. And I know that it seems as though the landlords appear to be getting the biggest rap, but I think it's a joint problem between tenants and landlords. And I think that one of the things we need to do from a housing committee standpoint is to bring those two groups together and see if we can't talk through and figure out what they need, the landlords. Beyond the business transaction of giving and receiving rent, we've got to come to a place where we understand that our neighborhoods are being negatively impacted and housing property values negatively impacted by the way our neighborhoods look with some of the rental properties. So I think that one of the things, the fresh ideas, I think we should do is to join a forum, is to bring a forum together and have discussions with the landlords. You have great landlords, and you have bad landlords, and you have great tenants, and you have bad tenants. But until we actually put them together in a room and try to figure out what they need and what kinds of solutions to the problems we can get to, then I think we'll just continue to suffer what we go through now today. We need to do that.
Thank you, Maria. Grant Olson?
Well, I think as, you know, being new to all of this and not really been actually really part of the council, it's tough for me to really comment on a specific policy that, you know, that I know about, that I want to bring forward. You know, one thing, commenting on the Post-Journal, you know, I think there has been some policy that's been pushed through in the past, but I think very little of it came from the council. I think a lot of it was pushed down from above, and lots of rubber stamps that said, yeah, let's go ahead with this. But I think more ideas need to come directly from the council, be presented, and be discussed at open forums, so people can comment on those. To put a little spin on the policy idea, I guess, it would be the policy of, you know, what do I think the council and how they should act? You know, one big, one policy I think the council should take on internally would be to, you know, kind of steal this from Raven, a little bit of a twist, but to negotiate and not litigate. And another policy I think we should work on is really some transparency, making it easy for people to hear and be part of what's going on in those discussions up in City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. And just a reminder, our question is, is there a policy or policies you want to see introduced and enacted in the next two years? And we'll move over to the west side of town in the Bergman Ward. That's Ward Number Four, and we'll begin this time with Marie Caruba. Marie?
Thank you. One of the things I would be looking at, much like the county does inspections of wells and septic systems on the transfer of property or sale, I think that we should be looking at when rental properties are transferred or sold, that they would require a complete inspection, so that they could bring them into code compliance at that point. It wouldn't solve the problem in one year, but over a course of time, we would be able to inspect, not much of a burden to the city inspectors, all the rental properties in the city. I would also look at housing programs. I've mentioned before, I'm on the Board of COI. They have a number of housing programs, along with code and CRIC. I think a homebuyers program that would continue to be offered in the city. I did get them to provide it here several years back. We have very affordable housing. People don't believe it, but my son, who's twenty-four years old, has a twenty-five-year-old friend, and when he was looking to rent property, found it was actually cheaper to buy a home and pay a mortgage than it was to rent the property or rent an apartment. So I think we need to talk to people and educate them, and let them know that they can afford to buy a home in the city. We just need to educate people that they are affordable, and they can do this with the city, and also provide initial, additional incentives to allow homesteading like they've done in other areas, to get professionals to move into a community and stay for a certain period of time to help to continue to develop properties and build up the homes.
Thank you, Marie. And finally, Brittany Spry. Brittany?
So one area that I would like to see the city focus on is, I would like to do, you know, evaluate and do an audit of our current tax-exempt properties. We have a significant percentage of properties in the city of Jamestown that are determined to be tax-exempt. It would be nice to have a committee, you know, investigate and evaluate what our current stance is, what qualifies these properties to fall under the category of tax-exempt. Are they still serving that purpose? If not, then they shouldn't be a part of that category anymore and should be returned to the tax-paying base as the other homes in the city of Jamestown. Another area, you know, I'm not sure if it quantifies as a policy or not, but I would like to see community relations and communication improved. I know with the recent changes to the recycling for the BPU, there's been a lot of talk and questioning about, you know, that program and what qualifies as cardboard, what qualifies as paper. It would be nice to see our different departments focusing on community relations and educating our public, and being able to provide our citizens with the information that they need in order to comply with the new initiatives that the city is introducing. For example, it would be nice to see the BPU do, you know, ongoing workshops about how to recycle, what the process is like, so people have a better understanding of how that all works and how to be a better citizen in our city.
Thank you, Brittany. We have time for one more question here, and this is specific to the area of the city you're going to be representing. As a ward council member, you are selected by a group of voters within a specific geographic area to represent them in city government. What is your assessment of the ward you want to represent? What is the most pressing issue within that ward? And is there any single issue that is unique to your ward that you won't necessarily find in any other ward within this city? And we'll begin this time in Ward Number Five with Grant Olson. Grant?
I think for my ward specifically is the Foot Avenue South Side area, you know. I think it gets kind of neglected in a lot of the planning that the city does, and there's a, it's a really important economical, economic area for our city. You know, there's a lot going on up there, and I think in my ward, other than the business aspect, would be what many of the council, our candidates have said, which is, you know, the housing. The housing needs to be addressed in my ward. I've been walking the, some of these streets, and you know, you have a house that, you know, could potentially be worth a hundred thousand dollars, but the house next door is worth fifteen thousand dollars. Yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. Maria Jones?
I believe in Ward Five, again, our biggest issue really is the changing of the neighborhoods. I've been in Ward Five, I've lived there for about forty years now. And the thing that I think, that I see changing the most are actually maybe two things. That is, of course, the housing, the housing issues, the neighborhood. We have got to come to a process of helping people to own homes. When you look at rentals and you look at homeowners' properties, the homeowner's properties, they're the ones who are stable, they seem to be more stable. So we need to figure out a way in Ward Five to help people own their own homes. I remember reading in one of the financial magazines that said that Chautauqua County, Jamestown was one of the few places in America where you could still buy a house, a fixer-upper, for fifty thousand dollars, right? And so we need to help people own their own homes. And then number two, again, I've said this before, we need to work with landlords and tenants. And then the public safety issue in Ward Five, again, it goes, it is related to the drug epidemic in America, and we're not exempt from it here in Jamestown. We need to find solutions to help people to get clean and to live and begin to live their lives again. And as long as we ignore that and act like it doesn't exist, the problem will continue. And so we want to keep Ward Five safe. It's still a great ward, it's the best ward in the city. And if we can fix those issues, we can put processes together to improve those issues if we can be successful.
Thank you, Maria. Moving on to Ward Number Four, and we'll begin this time with Brittany Spry. Brittany?
I would actually argue with Maria and say that Ward Four is the best ward in the city. I feel very fortunate, I live over on Hillcrest Avenue, we have a block party every year. I tell everybody it's the best street in the city of Jamestown, so if a house ever goes up for sale, snatch it really quick, because it's a great neighborhood. But in Ward Four, we have a lot of families, we have a lot of retired people, we have a lot of beautiful homes, safe neighborhoods. I feel very fortunate to have a two-and-a-half-year-old daughter living in the area that we live in. I think one of the biggest issues is that the city isn't family-friendly. When you're looking at a home that can accommodate your family, right now, we're currently just a family of three, but in the future, I think about more children, and we have a two-bedroom house, we're going to need a larger home. And looking at larger homes, you look at an increase in what your property taxes are. So when I'm comparing a home in the city of Jamestown versus maybe a home in Bustai, it's a lot more attractive maybe for me to move into a neighboring municipality. I think we need to find a way to keep the city family-friendly. The city of Jamestown has a lot to offer our families. There's beautiful neighborhoods, there's not, I grew up in the suburbs outside of Rochester. There's nothing like living in a neighborhood and being surrounded by other people and other children. Jamestown Public Schools has a lot to offer. Families are a sustainable tax base that we need in our city. They are making an investment in the future of the city. So I think that that is one of the biggest issues that my ward and the city of Jamestown in general is facing. We need to be a bit more family-friendly and get families to move into the city.
Thank you, Brittany. Marie Caruba?
Yes, unique to my ward are the beautiful trees, believe it or not, that line Third Street, the huge oaks that are now becoming actually a safety issue. We've had one fall on a home, fortunately no one was hurt. Last year, another oak tree had fallen and actually almost missed one of my employees who had been walking his dog around the block. So I think that aspect is unique. I don't think there's any other area in the city with an arch of trees that are as old or as beautiful as what's on Third Street, so it's devastating to watch, and I know everyone in the neighborhood is concerned, along with Dan Stone, who's trying to nurse the trees along. And as a nature lover and as someone who enjoys the beauty of the city, and my mother-in-law has commented, she's never seen a city with so many trees, and I think that's very important to a community, to see the beauty. The west side gateway to the city, going from one thing to the other, from the beauty to the blight, we have a number of blighted homes that are on the fringe of the neighborhood, including Fairmount Avenue, McKinley, and some of these areas really need to be addressed before they become really distressed areas of the city. The last CZB report pointed these out, but I will have to say that the core of the Fourth Ward is absolutely wonderful. It's one of the safest areas in the city to live, and we have some of the best schools in that ward. So I wouldn't want to live anywhere else in the city. I think it's, is my, it's just a beautiful area. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Over on the east side of town in Ward Number One, we'll begin with Brent Sheldon. Brent?
Thank you, Jason. Actually, the First Ward is the best ward, because we're number one. We're number one. I think what makes our ward unique is it's so diverse, from some of the highest taxed homes in the city to some of the poorest rental properties, from, one of our biggest assets, of course, is Jamestown Community College. We can use that college in many ways to help improve our workforce and our people, our citizens. But I think our greatest need is more manufacturing and high-tech jobs with good wages. That will allow more homeownership in Jamestown as well. Ward One has more manufacturing businesses and buildings than any other ward in the city. That makes us very unique. Go down Allen Street, corner of Buffalo and Second, Windsor Street, see a lot of those beautiful old brick factories that we've got there. Some of them can be renovated, some of them can be rehabbed and turned into new businesses. Others need to be demolished and make way for new manufacturing. Others need to be demolished and make way for new manufacturers to build new and efficient buildings. As I mentioned, JCC's a great asset. They can be at a partner in this process by providing trained workers with both the traditional JCC courses as well as the Manufacturing and Technology Center.
Thank you, Brent. And finally, Tim Smeele.
There's a really wide variety of homes and businesses and situations in Ward One, and so, I see it as being tremendously diverse, that blend of residential and commercial. It's really special. And in being out canvassing to try and earn your votes, I have had a lot of great conversations with folks that range from the folks up where I live on Harris Avenue or out on Hotchkiss, where I said, you know, what are your issues? What are your challenges? And they say, well, nothing really, this is a very quiet street, and I just want it to keep, stay that way. I want to keep it that way. On the other side, the tale of two cities, if I get down on Weak Street and Bush Streets, and I talk to residents who say, you know what, it's so loud in this neighborhood at night, I don't even stay, I stay at my boyfriend's house because I can't sleep here. So, this is an issue that we need to look at, and a lot of that is about policing, but it's also about neighbors helping each other and talking to each other. We really need to make sure that when folks move to the area, we're greeting them. When I was out on Falconer Street this weekend, I talked to a friend who moved in 3.5 weeks ago, just under a month ago, and I asked that person if he'd met his neighbor. He said, no. The neighbor across the street, who I had visited just before that, said, you know, we've got problems here, 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 and here. And I said, have you gone over and talked to them about that? He said, no, I haven't talked to them about that. So, we need to be talking to each other, we need to go outside of our comfort zones and be better neighbors.
Thank you, Tim. And we're approaching the end of the hour, which means we have to wrap it up, and we will give you each 60 seconds for closing comments. And we will begin with Ward number four and Marie Caruba. Marie?
I would like to thank Jason and WRFA and the Reg for providing the opportunity to discuss the issues. It's been a privilege to serve the residents of Ward Four as a representative on the council for the past several years. I firmly believe that qualification and hands-on experience are very important to achieving positive results, and I've proven that with what I've accomplished. With my proven record, along with my qualifications as an attorney and leader, I believe that I'm the best choice to once again represent the residents of the fourth ward. I humbly request your vote in the upcoming election. Please start early voting Saturday at noon on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. Brittany Spry?
Well, I just got done being nervous, and now it's time to be over. So, I want to say thank you to WRFA, the Reg, and Western New York News Now for providing this opportunity tonight. Thank you for everybody for coming out tonight and listening to everything that we have to say. There's a lot of great people running for office this year. Please get out and vote. As I stated earlier, this is our city, but it's not our city unless we're all involved. So, please vote, stay involved. I have worked in the public sector for over six years, and I know what it's like to serve a community, and I love it. Please, thank you so much for your time, and I hope that you get out there and vote, and I hope that you vote for me for Ward Four. Thank you.
Thank you. Over in Ward One, we'll begin this time with Tim Smeele. Tim?
Thanks, Jason. Thanks again for this beautiful venue at WRFA and the Reg Lillienay. And don't forget to thank Nate DiTanto for keeping great time, making sure we have a great time. Most of all, thank all of you for being here. Next time, bring five friends. It's, I grieve that so few people vote and so people, few people are involved in these processes, and so we need to do better. I love Jamestown, and I'm proud that it's my home. I live on Harris Street with my wife and stepdaughter and a dog and a cat, and it is, it is a quiet street, and it's a great place to be. I am new to this particular kind of service and government service, but I'm not new to community service. I was on the Board of Infinity Visual and Performing Arts when I founded, co-founded the Local Music Showcase. I also served on the Communications Committee for the United Way, and currently, I serve on the Board as Vice President of the Autobahn Community Nature Center. I also serve as the Vice President for the Child Advocacy Program. In addition, I serve on the Chautauqua, Southern Chautauqua County Credit Union, fighting for economic democracy. Low power to the people.
Thank you, Tim. Moving right along, Brent Sheldon?
Thank you, Jason, WRFA, the Reg. I was fortunate enough on Saturday to have a tour of the facility here. Of all the renovations were done, the city of Jamestown was a partner in that, as well as many local foundations, the state of New York, the Lieutenant Governor was here. It was, it was a great tour to see everything, and it's like, you know, the tour guide, I think he's sitting in the back there, Lynn Berry, said, yeah, you're going to be up front underneath the spotlights here. So, thanks, Lynn, thanks for that. But I'm proud of my past record of serving the people of Jamestown. In the past, I was able to cut city taxes, haven't had as much luck recently, so I'm looking forward to some new faces on city council to help out with cutting taxes, increasing the tax base, improving Jamestown. We've had a lot of great things go on here in Jamestown. The National Comedy Center is a tremendous asset, we've had numerous restaurants and bars open around it. We've got a lot of good things going here, but we have a lot of work to do. And I, and I think, you know, my past record, my experience shows that I should be re-elected to this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. And moving on finally to Ward number five, we'll begin with Maria Jones. Maria?
This council has done a lot. We have supported the start of the Comedy Center, the development of the Riverwalk. We've done the tax abatement for the zombie properties so people could buy those houses and fix them up and live in them. We've done a lot with new businesses. The Jamestown Brewing Company was a new business that has been started. We're even right now working with a developer for the Dollar General store that'll happen on Crescent Street. It has been a privilege to be a part of this council. I am a councilwoman for Ward Five. I know Ward Five, I know my ward, and I believe that if you elect me this time, this time around again, I believe that we need to talk more, we need more Town Hall meetings and conversations like this, and talk about solutions. And if you elect me to this office again, I will see that that happens. We need more, we need more public gatherings, block parties, and those kinds of processes that facilitate that exchange.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you so much for having me tonight.
And finally, Grant Olson. Grant?
Thanks for this whole event, Jason and WRFA and the Reg Center for the Arts. You know, there's a lot going on in Jamestown right now, and I'm proud to be from here. You know, we, I love my neighborhood, my neighbors are essentially like second grandparents to my daughter. It's a, it's a great place to be where I'm at, but we need to overall be better neighbors. You know, from something like my Neighborhood Improvement Project a couple of weeks ago, where we painted my neighbor's house, again, I'm not saying to go paint your neighbor's house, but go help him shovel a walk or, you know, go help him mow their grass. We just need to be overall better neighbors to each other. You know, I'm ready to take some action and get some things done here in the city, so please cast your vote for me on November 5th.
Thank you very much, Grant. And that will do it for our program tonight. Again, we want to thank our 12 candidates for city council for taking part. Grant Olson, Maria Jones, Brittany Spry, Marie Caruba, Tim Smeele, Brent Sheldon, Taylor Scott, Jeff Russell, Greg Rab, Raven Mason Thompson, Tamu Graham Ryan-Hart, and Kimberly Eklund. Thank you. And thank you to our host and presenter for tonight, the Reg Lillienay Center for the Arts, WRFA, along with Western New York News Now for providing a live video stream online. Our technical producer for tonight's show is WRFA General Manager Dennis Drew, Technical Director provided by Don Gould, Audio-Vision Consulting provided by Ed Thomasini, Venue and Hospitality Services provided by Stephanie Prin, Heather Felton, and Jay Peterson, and of course, our timekeeper, Nate DiTanto. Thank you very much. Don't forget that early voting in Chautauqua County begins on October 26th. Election Day this year is on Tuesday, November 5th. For more information, contact the Chautauqua County Board of Elections or visit votechautauqua.com. I'm WRFA Public Affairs Director Jason Sample, saying thank you for listening and watching, and don't forget to vote. Good night.